Okay, I'd like to call the adjourned meeting of the Planning Commission to order at six, six-ten P. M. Planning Secretary, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Good evening, Chairs. Commissioner Flores?
Present.
Commissioner Jimenez?
Present.
Commissioner Mora?
Present.
Vice Chair Ayala?
Present.
Chair Carball?
Are present.
All present.
I would like to call upon Commissioner Jimenez to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand. Place your right hand where you are. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, Ex parte communications. This section is intended to allow all officials the opportunity to reveal any disclosures regarding site visits or ex parte communications about public hearings. Are there any ex parte communications? Commissioner Flores?
None.
Commissioner Jimenez?
None.
Commissioner Mora?
None.
Vice Chair Ayala?
None.
Chair Francis? None. I'm sorry, Carball. Okay, first one, presentation. Twenty twenty-three Department of Planning and Development accomplishments. At this time, I'd like to call upon Planning Intern Rudy Lopez to provide the presentation for us this evening.
Hello, hello, okay. Good afternoon, Planning Commissioners. I compiled the twenty twenty-three Department of Planning and Development presentation. It's just gonna give a brief rundown of what we've accomplished throughout the year, from Building Department to Planning Department, as well as all the developments in the city and all the business licenses that were approved, as well as other notable accomplishments and what to look forward to in twenty twenty-four. So I hope you enjoy. That is the end of the presentation. I would like to give a quick shout-out to the Planning and Building Department, because, of course, none of this would have been possible without them. And a big shout-out to you, Planning Commission, for the same thing. I mean, twenty twenty-three looked incredible, and we can only strive for a stronger twenty twenty-four. So, thank you.
Thank you. I have a question on the presentation. If we can have the... How do our numbers now comply with state ordinance on housing development? How are we there? With what is required, you know? Do we know that, or can we come back with that info later?
Chair Carball, I believe you must be referring to the RENA numbers?
Like?
For Department of Finance reporting?
For what is, what state is mandating us? How is our percentage now looking with all these new developments that have come into our city?
Right, so I think you're referring to the regional housing...
Correct.
Needs assessment, which is the RENA numbers. It's nine hundred fifty-three for City of Santa Fe Springs, and we are required to report annually on that. We can certainly include in future presentations an update of that on an annual basis.
Because I think, from what we've done this year, it's, our numbers pretty much rose on that, so just kudos to you. But I just wanted to know where we were at on that. But thank you so much. That was a great, great... Apart from the sound kind of cutting off, other than that, it was great. Okay, so next is Public Comments on Non-Agenda Items.
Already, wow, okay.
At this time, the general public may address the Planning Commission on both non-agenda and agenda items. Please be aware that the maximum time allotted for members of the public to speak shall not exceed three minutes per speaker. State law prohibits the Planning Commission from taking action or entertaining extended discussion on a topic not listed on the agenda. Please show courtesy to others and direct all your comments to the chairperson. Planning Secretary, do we have any members of the public that wish to speak today?
No, Madam Chair, we do not.
I will now close public comment and move on to the next agenda item. Staff announcements?
Kwan, do you want to start it, or?
Just wanted to quick, provide you a quick update. As you may or may not know, the city is looking into building services to replace the county. We currently use the county for our Building Department services. In, I guess, last week, the city conducted interviews of the, of, I believe, four?
Yes.
Four consulting firms. And I think we're currently in negotiations with the top firms. So a decision will be made shortly in terms of who we will look to replace the county in terms of building services. Just wanted to give you that update and let you know that that is currently in the works.
Excellent.
Teresa? Sir?
Just to add on to what Kwan said, the award of contract for the Building Plan Check and Inspection Services that's expected to be awarded at the next council meeting, which is the twenty-third.
Thank you.
And Sonic, Sonic is still on track for April, and Dave saw chicken in May.
Woo, let's hear it, let's do the wave.
I'm trying, I'm trying. All right, public hearing. Public hearing amendment to development plan approval, case number nine-six-nine, and amendment to modification permit case number one-three-two-two, to allow the replacement of one existing tank at eight feet in diameter and eighteen feet in height, and three existing tanks at eight feet in diameter and twelve feet in height, with four new tanks at fourteen feet in diameter and thirty feet in height, and to not provide full screening for the four proposed tanks from the public right-of-way, Emmons Way, at one-oh-seven-four-seven Patterson Place within the M-two heavy manufacturing zone, and adopting a notice of exemption under SEQA Section one-five-three-zero-one, existing facilities, Brent Tech Pacific, Inc. I would like to call upon Planning Intern Rudy Lopez to provide a presentation regarding item number two.
Good afternoon, Planning Commissioners. My name is Rudy Lopez, and today I'll be presenting to you a project with two different cases. Amendment to Development Plan Approval, or ADPA, case number nine-six-nine, and Amendment to Modification Permit, or AMOD, case number one-three-two-two. For ADPA nine-six-nine, the applicant is requesting to allow the replacement of one existing tank at eight feet in diameter and eighteen feet in height, and three existing tanks at eight feet in diameter and twelve feet in height, with four new tanks at fourteen feet in diameter and thirty feet in height. And for AMOD one-three-two-two, the applicant is requesting to not provide full screening for the four proposed tanks from the public right-of-way, and in this case, we're talking about Emmons Way. The project is located at one-oh-seven-four-seven Patterson Place. The general plan designation is industrial. The zoning is M-two or heavy manufacturing, and the applicant is Brent Tech Pacific. Entitlements associated with the project site? In February of nineteen ninety-seven, CUP case number five-three-seven was approved to allow a bulk chemical storage facility involving hazardous materials, and MOD case number one-zero-six-nine was approved to reserve and not provide a portion of the required parking for that same facility. In May of twenty twenty, MOD case number one-three-two-one was approved to replace a portion of the required front yard landscaping with new parking stalls. And in June of twenty twenty-two, DPA case number nine-nine-two was approved to construct one new hydrogen peroxide blend tank with diameter of twelve feet and a height of sixteen feet and eight inches. In addition to MOD one-three-two-one, two other entitlements were also approved in May of twenty twenty. DPA case number nine-six-nine was approved to construct nineteen new steel tanks, a pipe bridge, and a utility bridge. And MOD case number one-three-two-two was approved to not fully screen the new steel tanks from Emmons Way. The project site is currently developed with a one-hundred-and-twenty-eight-thousand-one-hundred-seventy-eight-square-foot industrial tilt-up building, rail spurs, and a tank farm. And Brent Tech Pacific is a wholesale distributor of chemicals and ingredient solutions. Now we'll get into the first case, Amendment to Development Plan Approval, or again, ADPA, case number nine-six-nine. The original approval? In May of twenty twenty, Planning Commission approved nineteen above-ground storage tanks, a new pipe bridge, and a utility bridge. The amendment is asking to replace four of the existing tanks with four new tanks of greater size. This will allow the applicant to vacate their underground tank farm in the near future. The photo on the left is an overall site plan of the project site. And the photo on the left is a close-up of the project area. As you can see in the boxes, the one on the very left are existing above-ground tanks that will not be touched. And the box on the right are the existing tanks that are going to be replaced. As you can see in the bottom right corner, in the red cloud, that is the underground tank farm area that will be vacated once the construction is complete. All four proposed tanks will be fourteen feet in diameter, thirty feet in height, made of stainless steel, and will have a storage capacity of twenty-eight thousand gallons. The picture on the top is a rendering of the above-ground tank farm, with the tanks in green being the proposed tanks. And the picture on the bottom are the elevations with the measurements. Again, it'll be fourteen feet in diameter and thirty feet in height. Now we'll get into the second case, Amendment to Modification Permit, or AMOD, case number one-three-two-two. In May of twenty twenty, case number one-three-two-two was allowed, was approved to allow the applicant to not provide full screening for the originally approved outdoor tanks per DPA nine-six-nine to address the visibility of the newly proposed outdoor tanks from the public right-of-way. An amendment to MOD case number one-three-two-two allows the applicant to not provide full screening for the four proposed tanks. All four proposed tanks will be thirty feet in height and painted white to match the existing building and the air quality management district requirements. As a result, a top portion of the tanks will be visible from Emmons Way. And again, that is the same picture you saw two slides ago. In the middle are the proposed tanks. Along with Emmons Way, there are two other public right-of-ways that are but the property. The first one is Patterson Place. As you can see, the industrial building fully screens the outdoor tanks. From Florence Avenue, the grating separation from the street to the project site fully screens the outdoor tanks. And this is the street view from Emmons Way. Now if we look at it closely, you can see the existing thirty-five-foot tanks that are originally approved under DPA nine-six-nine and the proposed location of the new thirty-foot tanks. These new thirty-foot tanks will be five feet shorter and thus not as visible from Emmons Way as the originally approved thirty-five-foot tanks. To help with further mitigation of the visual impacts of these outdoor tanks, the location of the outdoor tanks and Emmons Way is separated by approximately three-hundred-and-fifty feet, thanks to a neighborly property and a one-hundred-foot railroad easement. Now we'll talk about environmental review. Staff finds the project to be categorically exempt pursuant to Section one-five-three-zero-one, Class One, existing facilities. No additional building square footage is created. The total capacity of chemical storage of the facility will not increase since the project will allow the applicant to vacate the underground tank farm in the future, and the project site is not listed on the hazardous waste and substance size or Cortez list. If the Planning Commission agrees, staff intends to file a notice of exemption within five days of project approval. Now we'll talk about public hearing notices. Public hearing notices were mailed out to all properties within a five-hundred-foot radius of the project site on January fourth, twenty twenty-four. And it was published in the local newspaper, or the Whittier Daily News, on January fourth, twenty twenty-four. No comments or inquiries were received to date. Considerations and recommendations. The project is consistent with the city's general plan and zoning ordinance. The project is consistent with the purpose of the M-two zone. The project meets the criteria set forth in Section one-five-five-point-seven-nine-three for the granting of a development plan approval. The project involves the replacement of four existing tanks with four new tanks of greater size. The construction and operation of the new tanks will be required to meet all standard requirements, including air quality management district, building, and fire codes. The construction and operation of the new above-ground tanks will create a safer and more efficient process for the business. The project will allow the applicant to vacate their underground tank farm in the near future. The project meets the criteria set forth in Section one-five-five-point-six-nine-five for the granting of a modification permit. The proposed tanks will have limited visibility from Emmons Way. The proposed tanks will be significantly less visible than the existing thirty-five-foot above-ground tanks. The proposed tanks will be painted white to meet air quality management district requirements and match the building. And the proposed tanks in Emmons Way are separated by a neighborly property and a one-hundred-foot railroad easement to mitigate visual impacts as much as possible. Therefore, staff recommends that you find the project to be categorically exempt pursuant to Section one-five-three-zero-one. pursuant to Section one-five-three-zero-one, Class One, Existing Facilities of SEQA, that you approve Amendment to Development Plan Approval, case number nine-six-nine, and Amendment to Modification Permit, case number one-three-two-two, subject to the conditions as stated in the attached resolution, and that you adopt Resolution number two-five-five-dash-two-zero-two-four, which incorporates the Planning Commission's findings and actions regarding this matter. Thank you, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
And do any of the commissioners at this time have questions for planning staff? The public is open, I, I'm sorry, I have to go. The public hearing is open. I would like to call upon the applicant. If they wish to speak, please approach the podium or use her raise hand function at this time. Is the applicant here? Wishing to speak or no?
Hello, I'm Mike Griswold with BrainTag. I'm the project manager for this project. I was also the project manager for the storage tanks which were installed a couple of years ago. Just want to thank you for your time this evening and to thank Rudy for doing such a good job with the, with the presentation.
Thank you so much. Do any of the commissioners have questions for the applicant?
I have a question. What do the tanks hold?
The tanks, the tanks will hold some of the material which currently is held in the underground storage tanks. We're not adding new chemicals. We are trying to get out of our underground storage tanks for obvious reasons and get into more appropriate above-ground storage tanks.
What material or what chemicals are we talking about?
Chemicals like xylene and glycol E3B. There are various solvents that are used in, in industrial applications.
Any other questions? Is there anyone from the audience wishing to speak on this matter? If so, please use her raise hand function or approach the podium at this time. Were there any comments received, Planning Secretary?
Madam Chair, no comments were received.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I'd like to close the public hearing at six-thirty-four P.M. Do the commissioners have any comments regarding this matter? This will be the time for deliberation. If not, may I entertain a motion to approve Resolution number two-five-five-dash-two-zero-two-four for amendment to development plan approval, DPA, case number nine-six-nine, and amendment to modification permit, case number one-three-two-two.
Move.
Commissioner Mora, may I have a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Jimenez, Planning Secretary, roll call, please.
Commissioner Flores?
Aye.
Commissioner Jimenez?
Aye.
Commissioner Mora?
Aye.
Vice Chair Ayala? Chair Carvajal?
Aye.
Passes five-zero.
Thank you, so ordered. Commissioner, Planning Commissioner Attorney, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The commission's action on this item shall become effective fourteen days after receipt by the applicant of written notice of the commission's action. The applicant and any, and/or any other interested party may file an appeal of the commission's action to the city council. The appeal must be in writing and filed with the city clerk within the previously, previously mentioned fourteen-day period. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, it's about that time, Planning Secretary. I would like to declare, oh, you go, my friend, I'm sorry.
It's okay, Madam Chair. I'd like to declare the office of chairperson vacant. Nominations are now open. Do any of the commissioners have any nominations to be considered?
I have a nomination.
Jimenez, a nomination?
I'd like to nominate Vice Chair Ayala as chair.
Do I have a second?
I second, and would you accept?
I'll take a roll call vote now. Commissioner Ayala? Commissioner Carvajal?
Aye.
Commissioner Flores?
Aye.
Commissioner Jimenez?
Aye.
Commissioner Mora?
Aye.
New chair, Ayala, congratulations, five-zero. I'd like to now declare the office of vice chairperson vacant. Nominations are now open. Do any of the commissioners have a nomination?
I would like to nominate Commissioner Mora. For vice chair.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Jimenez seconds. Do you accept, sir?
I accept, thank you.
That being said, I'll take a roll call. Commissioner Ayala?
Aye.
Commissioner Carvajal?
Aye.
Commissioner Flores?
Aye.
Commissioner Jimenez?
Aye.
Commissioner Mora?
Aye.
It passes five-zero. Congratulations, Vice Chair Mora.
So do we switch, or? Or you want to do it from the?
May I just say something? May I say something? I'd like to thank all my commissioners who helped me out this past year, being the first woman on this planning commission in over twenty-five years. It's a big feat. I thank everybody for their help, especially my partner right here, my partner in crime, who just, every time I ask a question, always gives it to me, or, or John, all of you guys. I just appreciate it, and I try to make it fun but complete. And lastly, I'm still going to be your cheerleader forever to my superior officer here, who I think is the best person around in here. You deserve a pay raise that goes on.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I turn it over to the new chair. You want to come here, friend? Just leave my stuff down.
All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine. Any items a planning commissioner wishes to discuss should be designated at this time. All other items may be approved in a single motion. Such approval will also waive the reading of any ordinance. Conditionally used permit, CUP case number four-nine-five-dash-seven-dash, a compliance review of an existing dance studio and theatrical arts school located at nine-seven-three-zero Alberta Avenue in the M.L. Limited Manufacturing Zone. Santa Fe Springs Performing Arts Center by Jason Ways. Conditionally used permit, CUP case number eight-one-five-dash-one, a, a time extension of a temporary truck, trailer, and tractor storage yard at one-one-seven-zero-eight Pike Street within the M-two heavy manufacturing zone. BrainTag Pacific, Inc. For consent item numbers four and five, is there a motion and a second for the approval of these consent items?
I move.
I'll second.
Planning Secretary, roll call, please.
Commissioner Flores?
Aye.
Commissioner Jimenez?
Aye.
Commissioner Carvajal?
Aye.
Vice Chair Mora?
Aye.
Chair Ayala?
Aye.
Passes five-zero.
So ordered.
Sorry, I didn't know if you were going to introduce me.
Yeah, Planning Commission Attorney, Kristi J. Smith.
Thank you. The commission's actions on this item shall be effective fourteen days after receipt by the applicant of written notice of the commission's action. The applicant and/or any other interested party may file an appeal of the commission's action to the city council. The appeal must be in writing and filed with the city clerk within the previously mentioned fourteen-day period. Thank you.
Do any of the commissioners have any comments or something to report on?
I do, yeah. With these consultants for the plan check engineering and inspections, do we know, are you, who the, the frontrunners are? Or even, is trans-tech engineering one of our considerations?
It's not on the agenda, so.
And if I can chime in, until, just for your edification, until the staff or the, the interview or the, who's ever evaluating have come up with that list and going to present it, they can't tell you because it's not a public record yet.
Got it, okay.
Once that's all done, then that's all free, you know, fair game.
That's all I have.
Okay, I got, first, I would like to congratulate Commissioner Carvajal on such a great year. You did a great job. And secondly, I would like to congratulate Commissioner Ayala, Chair Ayala, I should say. And it's going to be good. You'll, you'll have a good time. And congratulations to Commissioner Mora as vice chair, and congratulations to Commissioner Flores for all of us. We had a great year last year, and I'm proud of our team, and I think there's good things ahead of us. That's all I have to report.
Well, I just want to say thank you very much as well. Chair Carvajal, thank you for everything that you've done and for your continued support. I really appreciate all the fun and liveliness that you bring to the meetings. It is an honor, and I thank you guys all for nominating me. I really do appreciate it. Okay?
My comment would be, I'm looking forward to a great year, serving with all of you again, and, and for you, Chair Ayala, it's going to be bigger and better, as I always say. And with our planning department and staff, we can't go wrong. So that's a great thing. The other thing I'd like to say on, for a women's club is having their quarter mania March seventeenth, twenty dollars a ticket. Of course, we all know the monies go to our different nonprofits and to the club that we always help every, many organizations. Every money, when we get in, we give out. So if anybody would like to buy a ticket, please let me know, and we can do that. I also like to thank Commissioner Mora and Commissioner Jimenez. They attended the city council meeting last time with myself, and I was notified by a few of the council members that they liked seeing that. They liked us all, they liked us in attendance. And I'd encourage Commissioner Flores and Chairperson Ayala for this next meeting, if we can attend, it would be good as a uniform. It's not required, but the council members did like that. They did share that with us, and I think it's, would be good. Just something to think about.
And I'm just going to chime in on that.
Can we?
You're, you're just doing this on your own. You're not in a uniform if you go. It's just because you have the time to do it because we aren't setting a meeting at the council.
Exactly, and that's what I said.
That's why we have to, and you will not discuss any business that comes in, in front of you, because then that would be a meeting.
Exactly. So if you'd like to, it just shows really good that they're on there. But I just wanted to say that. And also, Santa Fe Springs Sister Cities Committee is restarting their Young Ambassadors Student Exchange this summer for 2024. So we do have applications going out for our youth to attend Germany for three weeks out there. And we fundraise a ticket this year. The Sister City Committee is paying eight-hundred dollars towards the Young Ambassadors tickets for the first six that apply. So you go over there for three weeks, and then that student comes and stays at your home. The Sister Cities Committee plans out a full agenda. Disneyland, we go, we've gone to San Francisco, all over the place. And Sister Cities pays for it, and, and the students. So if anybody is interested, please see me on that. And we just look forward to a great summer. So that's a great thing.
First and foremost, Chair Carvajal, thank you for your service for this year, or this past year. And also thank you, everybody, for the vote of confidence as your vice chair. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. And also the, the presentation. And I don't think Santa Fe Springs uses that phrase progress with pride anymore. Is that still there? I know we used to use it in the past. But it's definitely there. So, you know, the planning team, you guys are awesome. Oh, yes. All the developments that are in the past, those are coming in the future, the different phases of development. It's a, it's, it's awesome, and I'm very proud to be part of this, this team. So, so thank you very much. On a happy note, of course, you know, the end of the year, Christmas was a big deal here in Santa Fe Springs. But, you know, my baby is a Christmas float program, so record numbers at tree lighting. We got a new tree. The good part about that tree is that it is expandable, but it can get bigger. So in the future, we're looking at maybe adding, you know, five-feet increments. So instead of people that can't see it on the corner where they used to see it, they still can't see it from the corner, but it'll be in the middle of our plaza. So that event was awesome. And also record number, we added a couple of stops on the float. So that was really nice to see all the kids back out and as if COVID never, ever happened. So that was great. And I have a question, if I may. I know this kind of fizzled out. This may be for planning or Wayne or Kwan. Couple months ago, we had a petition for a tree removal. Did that just stop? And we didn't hear anything else about it?
So the resident at, for that tree removal actually formally submitted a written request to withdraw his appeal.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And happy new year, everybody.
Definitely. Prior to us adjourning the meeting, as you know, the holidays affect, the holidays in February affect our planning commission meeting. We were looking at having it the day after the holiday. I do have to cross-reference with the CC. So I'll be sending out an email, actually, to everyone tomorrow just so that we can solidify the date. Is there any conflicts next month for anybody so that we can be aware of?
Our regularly scheduled meeting is February twelfth.
But it's a holiday.
Went to a cough attack. I'm gonna, I would like to adjourn the meeting to the next regular planning commission meeting. And I'll be ending it at six forty-nine.